Welcome back to Board of County Commissioners' meeting for April the 4th, 2023. We are now on item number nine. This is matters by the public. This is where the public will get to speak for up to three minutes with whatever you'd like to speak to the board about. But this is our time to listen, your time to speak. So, thank you. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Moreno, who will be asking or inviting folks to speak, and to our Vice Mayor, who will be timing their time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about 16 comment cards. So if you would take both of the podiums, please. John Fisher at one podium and Nadir Perez at the next, please.
Who's first?
John Fisher.
Excellent. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is John Fisher, and I live in the community of Escondido out in west Boca Raton. Escondido sits in a wicked, sharp S-turn that I've addressed before to you before. It's often called Dead Man's Curve. Myself and representatives from our neighboring community, the Timbers of Boca Raton, have communicated our serious concerns about this dangerous stretch section of Lyons Road through text messages, emails, phone calls, Zoom meetings, and face-to-face meetings with our commissioner and staff, along with letters and petitions that were asked of us. Very little, if anything, has been done at all. And this spans a long stretch of time here. Just yesterday, just yesterday, another crash, okay, involving two teenagers, extensive damage, property damage, and sending those two teenagers to the hospital with serious injuries. Just yesterday. Okay? So, I'll wrap it up with this. We plan on continuing to address you each and every time one of these crashes happens. And as they continue to build in a statistical way, I'm assuming that your legal division, along with risk management, if they haven't already, will advise you that the county's culpable negligence is steadily increasing. And it might weigh heavily in a liability sense, especially with the next fatality. And I believe there'll be another fatality. There's been multiple ones already. So, we, the people, are giving you, the Board of County Commissioners, not just our one commissioner, all of you, direction to give staff direction to fix this problem. So, please, help us. It's getting, it's continually, you know, happening, these crashes, and something needs to be done. We have given suggestions, and I'll be happy to sit down once again with somebody and talk with them about the suggestions that we have. We're not experts. So, we have no expertise with traffic and roads and safety signals and all that, but I have suggestions. So, we're going to continue coming to you. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Sax, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fisher, for coming down and talking to us. This is an issue that we've been dealing with for probably since I've been sitting in this seat. You can sit down, sir, and relax and take notes if you'd like. I don't have any questions for you. I did want to respond on behalf of the county commission. Are there other folks here from Escondido?
You asked me.
Well, this is, this is an issue that was created many years ago by the Florida Department of Transportation when they, when they constructed the road in, with the Board of County Commissioners many years ago. And what has occurred since then is we've had numerous meetings with the, with the folks that use that road at Escondido. We've also brought out the engineering staff from the county to examine the road, inspect the road, see what we could do to fix it. And they have been out there numerous times. There's no way that we could put safely a traffic light there, which I would like to do. Would make it a lot easier for me to just put a light there. However, it would not make the roadway safer. According to the experts, it would make it more dangerous. And we can only go with the experts. I brought this issue up before the Secretary of the Florida Department of Transportation. And I had his engineers look at the road, inspect the road. What we did is we put some signs up, lit signs. We have greater law enforcement there, but still, it would not be safe to put an intersection light there. So, when I heard about this, I immediately got into action over the, yesterday, contacted the sheriff's office to investigate this accident. This accident occurred two days ago, late at night. Mercedes-Benz group of teenagers, high speed, hit a curb. The kids are fine. They went to the hospital to, just to make sure they were okay. But they're okay. Property damage. They were ticketed with careless driving because of the high speed. So, Mr. Fisher, thank you, and anyone else who is here. We're trying to work on it as much as we can. We've done everything we can. And but we want to try to find a solution to kids taking that road and Lyons Road by Escondido so that we don't have further accidents. And we're going to work continuously with you and the other residents. So, thank you for being here, sir.
Mr. Perez.
Hi. Hi. Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate your time. My name is Nadir Perez, and I'm here on behalf of Septic Sucks. It's a community-led citizen group, just trying to inform our community about the harms of septic tanks. We have canvassed and spoken to many members of our community, and they really want to protect their waterways. We have a state with beautiful beaches, world-class tourism, and septic tanks directly affect how our waters and wildlife get contaminated. Our community wants to see thousands of tourist dollars continue to come to Florida, and we all enjoy the benefits of having people come and visit Florida for our beaches, our wildlife, and our, and the nature. The science and research has shown countless times that septic tanks directly correlate in polluting our, our waterways and the toxins that emit from there. What they don't want to see is exponential algae in our waterways, whether it's a canal, a river, or our beaches, killing our wildlife and, and making it uninhabitable and unable to, you know, it's just a bad look. Most of our constituents aren't aware of the science of septic tanks, and most of them are in favor of creating processes or any type of incentive to help them transition from septic over to the main sewer line. Our organization works directly in reaching out, canvassing, and collecting signatures in support of it. It has a lot of bipartisan support. This isn't a Republican or Democrat issue. This is about our environment. This is about being able to protect the resources that make Florida great. We're calling on this commission to implement common sense solutions. Some of them include opposing future septic tank problem, septic tank projects, requiring existing septic tanks to have toxic eliminating agents in there cleanly. In the cleaning process, septic tanks need to be cleaned at least once a year. And helping fund and to replace or upgrade our current sewer system. Like we said, a lot of our community is in favor of a transition, and however you guys see fit. The future of our state's water quality relies heavily on your leadership and to create healthy and sustainable futures for Florida, its economy, our tourism, and just our overall health as well. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Yes. Mr. Perez, do you have a, like a website or contact for your organization?
Yes, thank you. 100%. It's www.septicsucks.com, but I'll be more than happy to provide that for you as well.
If you could give it to the court. Thank you.
For sure.
Thank you. Our next two cards are Cindy Falco de Corrado and Kathy Quenville.
Good afternoon. I'm here to represent in regards to the Dominion machines. As long as we've had the Dominion voting system, and as long as we have criminal enterprises that are counting the votes, we are never going to have an honest election. We're coming up upon another election year in 2024. I'd like to know, when are we going to get rid of these machines? When are we going to go back to the only way that ever truly did work, where we, the people, were actually making a vote, and that vote was counted as what we, the people, have decided? We are being robbed, and we have brought this situation up many, many times. We've been ignored. Today, you're going to hear someone who has actual statistics of the crimes against we, the people, with this voting situation. If we don't go back to paper ballots, and we stop with this mail-in voting, and only time you should ever have a mail-in vote was back in the day when my parents weren't able to be in town. They had to show an itinerary. They had to show an airplane ticket or a hotel where they were staying. There had to be proof that they really weren't going to be here at that time. Because what's been going on in the last umpteen years with this voting situation, I also ran as mayor, and there was fraudulent 30,000 votes that were made up. There were precincts that were closed a half an hour earlier than the time that it needed to be done. There is fraud everywhere we go. And we, the people, I know that you don't think that we're still a constitutional government, but we are, and each one of you took an oath to uphold and to protect the Constitution of the United States of America. We expect you to do your job. We're so glad to see, I'm personally glad to see, a new board, hopefully with people that get what the Constitution's about, who care about the Constitution and will do what's right by we, the people, and vote against any machines, taking any calculated guesses, and having criminals working behind the scenes, digitalizing, and doing it electronically, and changing our vote. Thank you.
Just for, excuse me, excuse me. We don't have public displays in here. This is, this is a meeting, and we expect a quorum. But I do want to let folks know, we do not use Dominion voting machines in Palm Beach County.
Thank you. We don't use Dominion.
We do not use Dominion, but anyways. Okay, giddy up. Hi, I'm Kathy Quenville from Wellington. Why I'm here, and thank you for your time, is that every time I vote in Palm Beach County, I wonder if my vote will count as I cast it. There's no way of knowing, particularly with the express vote. It's impossible to trust the digitized electronic technology in place alongside the complicated 10-step vote-by-mail process that can literally change ballots. So, why am I bugging you with it? Because you're our Palm Beach County Funding CEO. The supervisor of elections implemented electronic machines and processes that aren't reliable, and you need to know because you're our most local leaders. Florida Statute 101.015 marries you to the supervisor of elections, the Division of Elections, and Department of State to address election integrity, process, certification, funding, equipment standards with the will of the public in odd number of years. Other Florida counties and U.S. states are expressing election result concerns and are rejecting electronic vote machines in favor of hand-counting paper ballots. A long list of countries did away with electronic voting machines for the same reasons we should. We can look at alternative voting methods used around the world. Stop trusting elections to complicated process and technology that we can't access, is hackable, allows outside access. Most don't understand, we can't track accuracy, and can't oversee or audit with authority, ever. That's juxtaposed to the only unchangeable representation of a vote, hard copy paper ballots. We're falling behind the curve in Palm Beach County, even though election integrity is a bipartisan concern. Palm Beach County can take a play even from the Democrat platform and shoot for a national one-day holiday for elections. Docs are here in my hand for your review, if you're willing to accept them, with facts to back up what I'm saying. May I submit them? I drafted a resolution seeking your support for our Florida Voter Bill of Rights for three main reasons. One is the public is uncomfortable with electronic voting machines. Second, third-party proprietary software leaves us open for incorrect results that we can't confirm. And three, it's to open a two-way discussion, to share fact, address feasible solutions, to prevent incorrect election results in the future. Last year, this board was clear in support for the live streaming solution we proposed. I'm hopeful for your candor now, or today, or imminently. Do you support correct vote counts in Florida and our Voter Bill of Rights in Palm Beach County? Both Florida House and Senate legislation, legislators recognize their problems with election integrity by releasing a 98-page comprehensive elections bill today. It's critical to continue safeguarding against election errors, and if this local board will entertain discussion with facts to reach solutions, I volunteer to meet at your request. Thank you.
This is the last time I'm going to ask you to please not have public displays inside this hall. If you cannot abide by that, then I'm going to ask the sheriff's deputy to escort you outside of this room.
What statute is that?
Yeah, what law is ours?
We have to go with all that.
Okay. Deputy, if you please, people are yelling out. If you're going to yell out, you're going to be removed from this room. Thank you very much. Please continue. I warned you the last time.
Next people up, Sherri Ackerly and John Garen. Please, to each microphone.
Should I go?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Sherri Ackerly. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. And on the Voter Bill of Rights, is resolved to support Florida's Voter Bill of Rights, we call upon the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners to support Palm Beach voters with the Supervisor of Elections, the Division of Elections, and the Department of State to abide by Florida law and will of the public. According to Florida 101, 101.0151, urge you to use your authority to prohibit the use of electronic voting machines in the state of Florida. I urge instead the use of paper ballots, manual counting systems, to comply with Florida Voters' Bill of Rights as provided for in Florida Statute 101.0312 to ensure Palm Beach County votes are accurately counted. Let it hereby be further resolved that PBC, BCC advocates the highest recognized standard for election results and accuracy. One, by recurring, requiring proof of residency, citizenship, and age for in-person votes. Restricting the distribution of mail-in ballots to only disabled military residents that are out of state on Election Day with proof. Opening and counting mail-in ballots only on Election Day. This is critical. Why are they counted two weeks before? Hand-counting all ballots publicly at precincts on Election Day only. Please advise of your support, as our county and our state depend on this Voters' Bill of Rights. We have it in place, and we hope that you'll support it. And I have documentation to submit as well, if you'd accept it afterwards.
You can give that to Craig. He'll be happy to take it from you.
Thank you.
My name is John Garen, and it's a pleasure to speak with you today. When it comes to election integrity, there are several areas of potential vulnerability, also known as attack vectors. This includes voter rolls, vote-by-mail signature match, voting machines, and more. When it comes to technology, the big tech execs cover up their laptop cameras and meet in person for the most sensitive discussions. Despite having the best tech security on the planet, they understand tech can be hacked. That's an attack, that it is an attack vector. So, they take precaution and don't trust technology for the most serious matters. Regarding election integrity, there's been no proven widespread issue with voting machines. However, it remains vulnerable to future attack. If we build the Maginot Line to improve voter rolls, signature matches, and other things, but leave wide open other areas of attack, then we are still vulnerable to fraud. Moreover, the general public will lack trust in the process, knowing there is obvious negligence and vulnerability, even if minimal fraud actually occurs. When it comes to safeguarding our democracy, I suggest we take the same precaution as the tech execs and not trust technology when it comes to the most sensitive matters such as voting. I strongly recommend a comprehensive approach to election integrity, which includes removing voting machines as an attack vector. Thank you.
Thank you. May I please have Jonathan Schiffer, followed by Lynn Redman.
Jonathan Schiffer from Wellington, Florida. Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. I do have the same documents as the previous two speakers, and with your permission, I'll drop them off. You obviously don't have to read everybody's copy. I'm going to take a slightly different approach to this electoral machinery question so that you don't get totally bored, and I'm not a technician. The two best autobiographies of our past presidents were by John Adams and Ulysses S. Grant. John Adams said long ago that if you want to keep a democracy, you have to have education and morality. He meant read the Bible in the evenings around the table with your mother and father. It was easier. You got your education, you got your morality. Things have obviously changed and developed since then, but the question of morality, which in itself is complicated, has one aspect which I think I'd like to recommend to you, which is courage. We have a county out in California, of all places, that has already voted to throw away the machinery. It's your possibility to be the first county in Florida to follow that precedent. And that would be, that would be something worth, worth thinking about. So, democracy is education and morality. Part of morality is courage. I hope, I hope you go down that road. The second autobiography, I'm obviously going through these biographies rather quickly. They're all multi-volume. The second one was, which is well reputed, is by Ulysses S. Grant. As we all know, he was the famous general during our Civil War, and one of the qualities or tactics that he used was preemption. Preemption to take away uncertainty. In other, this is a tactic to deal with uncertainty. Elections are uncertain. What we want to do, I believe all of us, is to take away as much uncertainty as possible. They're very complex phenomena. Grant took away the uncertainty by figuring out what the enemy was going to do and trying to eliminate as many small things as he could before the main battle. Very smart tactic. Think of what we could have avoided with January 6th if our court system had actually listened to all the claims that were made about electoral problems. If those had been adjudicated, and for instance, come back negative, there would have been no basis for January 6th. People would have eliminated uncertainty. I think that it's a possible set of principles for you to use courage and preemption and deal with this question of electoral fraud and electoral machinery and so forth and so on with fortitude and with the tactic of taking away uncertainty as a preemptive tactic. Thank you.
Following Ms. Redman, I have Bill Riley and then Mickey Isaacson.
I'm very lucky to be here today with such a wonderful group of representatives here, and I'm very thankful for your hard work and dedication. Couldn't be happier with a wonderful group like this here today. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. I'll be very brief. You're my local contact, so, and I know you're one facet of the process to help possibly facilitate change in the voting laws. And this is about supporting Florida Bill of Rights, Voter Bill of Rights. And I'm, I don't do well, like Jonathan, reading off the cuff, so I'm just going to do a little reading, but very little. The manufacturers of the electronic voting machines do not provide access to allow the public to forensically check its software machines, modems, and systems to determine whether its election equipment is secure or has been, or malware has been installed. Therefore, the voter really can't verify the accuracy of their vote. More than 30% of the machines used in Florida scan ballots using Express Voting Device. It produces the voter's ballot selection, including a barcode. And the EVM scan only the unreadable barcode on the voter ballot. Therefore, Florida voters cannot verify their vote is accurately counted. And lastly, the paper ballot cast by a voter is the best evidence of the voter's intent. Hand-counting of paper ballots is the highest recognized standard for accuracy in elections. The number of ballots cast in all 795 Palm Beach County precincts rarely reached a total count of over 2,000 votes in the 2022 election. So, in closing, we, I thank you for your attention, and we feel this is important, and I hope you do as well. And I want to wish you all a happy Easter or Passover, whichever applies. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. And, yes, sir.
Commissioner Baxter, you're right, Miss.
Mayor, would you mind if we had the attorney maybe explain to what degree we actually can control and not control the election cycle so that everyone here understands that?
I'd be happy to do that, although people are free to express whatever opinions.
They, obviously, we are here to listen. I just, so they know what they can ask for because we can't do a lot of what's being asked.
I understand.
You know, just generally, we can follow up with additional. Generally, we, the supervisor of election is an independent constitutional officer with the duties to run the elections. We do have some budget control and things of that nature, but we do not, you know, have the ability to direct the supervisor of election how to run the elections.
And I think it would be fair to add, the supervisor of elections is controlled by Department of State and Division of Elections.
Yes, complying with the statutes and rules of those bodies.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, sir. Very, very good. Very pertinent to my next, to my comments here. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. And my name is Bill Riley. I live down in Boca Raton. And along the lines of changing the laws and changing rules and procedures and regulations, we understand, I understand that it's not your, it's under your purview to do so. But I'm here today to advocate, with your help, for the Florida Voter Bill of Rights and fostering a positive working relationship with the SOE and our other legislative agencies. I'm just going to give you my background. I canvassed past couple of years. I hit a thousands of doors. I've talked to hundreds of people. And the citizenry are concerned about our election system, and they feel that there's, isn't transparency, that their vote isn't secure within the electoral system. We're get, we're going to get to what you can do to help us. You do work with the BCC. We have a representation on the canvas board. You hear updates from the supervisor, Madam Supervisor, from time to time, like we did last year. You, and you oversee the, some of the financing and funding. I received an email from the Secretary of State and the DOE, the Division of Elections, and they explained to me that they do not, nor do they require certifying certain election equipment over at, over at the tabulation center. Now, the equipment that the retail voter sees when you go to the polling center, yeah, that stuff is checked, certified, looked at, got the LNA process going through that. But this, there's machines, equipment, tabulators, automated machines with communications and chips, or thumb drives, that the, that they don't look after. Nobody's watching this system. And they said so. I have the email. So, we're leaving it up to our, you know, our good supervisor to take care of that. But it seems to me, do we need to have checks and balances along the lines based on everybody's troubles with the, with the election system? Well, for one, I think so. I think we need to have somebody look at it. Now, this is where you guys come in. I was, hope that we could foster and our election system and create more integrity if you could assist us in addressing the legislature as an advocate for us, as your, our commissioners. And we, in turn, we're going to go to the SOS. I already have, my representative's already working with me on this already. So, we just need you as another cog in the wheel, somebody else to get in there and stand behind us to do this. We're not, we know you can't change it independently. It's not, it's not, it's not a unilateral thing. But September, the, the, the new session comes into Congress, the legislative session. So, if we could, as a time-wise, if we could make any changes or suggestions before then, it would be helpful in attaining what we need to do. And some of that is getting confidence back in our election system. My final thing is that my appeal today is not only to advocate and push for changes, but working with other agencies to do so, improving the trust in our election system and its the great American standard. And again, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, if I may, ask your permission to submit some paperwork.
Please do.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and public. My name is Mickey Isaacson, and I am a citizen in Palm Beach County. If I did my job correctly, all the Commissioners here received an email from me regarding treason. If I did my job correctly, all the Commissioners here received an email from me regarding treason. I have never been involved in politics before '22. Then God whispered for me to do something. This is my treason report. I participated in election integrity in the midterm general '22 and the municipal '23 elections. At the SOE tabulation warehouse, I was able to observe and participate in LNA testing, public viewing, public inspection, signature verification, canvas board meetings, ballot signature acceptance and rejections, ballot certificate openings, tabulation and clear ballot machines, sorting of ballots, VBM ballot drop boxes, Express Vote Machines, ballot cures, candidate race runoffs, hand count audits, early vote sites, duplication, YOACVA public records requests, and election night. At every single one of these individual events on different days, I was able to learn something new in the election process. I have notebooks of data and a camera full of photos from my experience during the Palm Beach County elections. I reported my findings to the state reps, governor, secretary of state, FDLE, Election Crimes Department, members of the Palm Beach County REC, and more. What I saw in LNA is that they were able to preprogram the machines to give a report of a preprogrammed race, public viewing of ballots with hidden precinct numbers and ballot counts from view, signatures being accepted that didn't match, and one being rejected that did. Ballots jamming the machines in the tabulation area and clear ballot machines being used that have software in them to change the votes without having to change the ballot. Oversized sorting machines that would not sort by precinct, no chain of custody when the ballots were picked up or dropped off from the supposed post office, Dropbox stations unsecured to accept ballots before voting day, 400 Express Vote Machines used during two weeks of early vote, and unofficial ballot paper with barcodes, USBs from Express Vote Machines, DS200 machines, and e-vet check-in machines handed in the tabulation area by ESNS employees, ballot curing that did not signature match, race runoffs that were questionable, and ability to do a hand count audit in record time, ballots rejected by a machine so that they could be viewed by a contracted worker to then be duplicated and changed without the supervision of canvassing board members, YOACVA that exposed voter names and how they voted, public records requests that were either denied or an invoice was provided for prohibited amounts. Election night where candidate lost by 860 votes after 10:00 p.m., when they were winning before the last three precincts came in, and 1,300 ballots dead in the cure. Throughout the general election night and on election night, there were GOP representatives and over seven DeSantis attorneys showing up to make sure DeSantis and Rubio won the general election. Commissioners, you work for we, the people. We expect that you take this seriously and do something for our country and freedom and the security of the people. You are not entitled to sit up there and ignore what people are communicating to you. It is your job to look at everything.
Can you please wrap up? You've gone over. Thank you.
Thank you. The next cards are Ron, former county commissioner Ron Howard, Daniel Ruiz, Candace Rojas, and Jeff Bonjorno.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ron Howard, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm a former county commissioner. A little history lesson here. In 1986, my mother, Eleanor Howard, campaigned for supervisor of elections. Now, part of her platform was to have paper ballot elections in Palm Beach County. And she had the advice of computer experts all throughout the country. And she brought in documentation that went all the way up to the ceiling describing problems with computer elections. Now, I want to make it very perfectly clear that at no time during that campaign did she ever say anything derogatory about the Palm Beach County elections, and nothing derogatory about the supervisor of elections. No. She campaigned on the idea that based on all the documentation that she had, that there would be problems with computer voting right here in Palm Beach County. And sure enough, a few years later, we had a big problem. And it was a presidential election. It was George Bush, George W. Bush, Al Gore, and our good friend Ralph Nader. Now, at the time, there was a big problem because the Democrats were very upset because they supposedly didn't cast their ballot correctly because they voted for Ralph Nader and not Al Gore. And so Al Gore lost the election, right here, Palm Beach County. We have a problem with electronic computer voting. And I'm here today to say, after all those years, we're still talking about the same thing, Commissioners. I'm proposing that you read the document that says, "The people of Palm Beach County and the Commission of Palm Beach County support paper ballot elections." And let's put all the problems to rest. We're not asking you to do anything.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you to wrap up, Commissioner?
Support this document. I thank you very much, my mother, wherever she is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. And she got her wish because we do use paper ballots in Palm Beach County.
What's that?
We do use paper ballots in Palm Beach County. So she got it done.
Okay. Say that I go to the bank. Say I have a million dollars here, full of...
Could you identify yourself, sir?
My name is Daniel Ruiz.
Thank you.
I have a million dollars here, and you ask me, how do you prove it? Well, my machine says that. Would you believe that? I have a question for you. Would you believe that? My machine, my Dominion machine, says I have a million dollars here. Would you believe it? You have to count it. Simple as that. You have to count it publicly. It's very easy. It's not rocket science. If this one is standard on a court of law, if you just say, well, the machine says that, the machine has to be confirmed with another process, has to be cross-checked with a different process. That's basic principle of systems. Otherwise, it's not a system. The machine, the computer can trigger that result within a second. That's fine. But then it has to be counted manually. That's basic principles. I don't understand how this makes it so complicated. Further than that, I worked on election ones, and I saw that the ballots are different for Democrats than Republicans. Are you guys aware of that? It has a different barcode. That can trigger a lot of problems, can be preference, can be better, can be worse. If you see the ballot for the same election, I'm not talking about primaries, I'm talking just a regular election, on the side, the barcode is different if you're a Democrat and is different if you're a Republican. So that easily can trigger different options, different algorithms on a machine, which can be prioritized to whatever you guys, whatever somebody wants it to do. It should be the same. It should be indistinctive, Republicans or Democrats. The other thing that comes to my attention is a huge paper ballot. It's a whole sheet. Why are you making so, you have to put all the languages in there? Do you make it more complicated for no reason? You just vote for A or B. Do you think any Hispanic or anybody that speaks Haitian or other like clearly would understand that? You guys are making it more complicated for no reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rojas.
Hello. My name is Candace Rojas. I'm chairman of the Palm Beach Patriots. Test, test. My name is Candace Rojas, and I'm the chairman of the Palm Beach Patriots. Our mission is to promote America First policies. Our core values is faith, family, freedom, free speech, and fair elections. Ironically, while we're in this local meeting, our authentic president, Donald J. Trump, is being arrested in the Banana Republic of New York. I believe that the people all across the nation, including in Palm Beach County, we have lost confidence in the election process in general. I personally believe all politicians are installed and all elections are rigged. Although it is legal, I actually believe it's unethical, and I love Chairman Barnett, but I believe it's unethical that he sits here as a commissioner and he's also the head of the Palm Beach REC. I think it's unethical, even if it's legal. But we are asking for all of you to help us to fix this problem that's universal. It's not just here. During 2022 and 2023, I've spent hours, and we had a grassroots team at the supervisor of elections, and it's very evident that we were verifying the signatures and we are observing the final stages of the infamous duplicator machines. And we watched Ron DeSantis, our governor, to enforce the SB 60 to prevent the ballot harvesting, but there's basically 101 ways to cheat. And our personal observations, it's evident to me that the novice runback duplicator machines purchased with Zuckerbucks are questionable, to say the least. They're able to be used for cheating and to switch the votes using the USBs. And we've personally observed employees who, well-intentioned employees, who were in charge of changing the miscounted votes back to the correct vote manually from those runback machines. It just seems like we're in kangaroo world, clown world, I call it. And so there are so many reports published. We go to all these election integrity meetings with Professor Clement saying, "I just don't understand why the Commissioners don't stand up for the we, the people and somehow defund the machines. The entire voting process, I believe, must be changed." I'm actually repeating my notes from the last two or three times I've been here, but I don't believe anything's been done. But we, the people, are saying one day only voting and make it a holiday, except for the exception of the military, to use handwritten ballots, ID required to vote, and hand counting the ballots. So I will conclude with a famous quote. "It does not matter who votes. It matters who counts the votes." And this applies to Palm Beach County.
Thank you.
Thank you for fixing this.
Hi, everyone. I'm back again. My name is Jeff Bonjorno. Thanks for having me. I'm an IT expert. Mayor, what you say is disingenuous when you point out the differences between Dominion and ESNS, because I know for a fact that they're both developed from a platform called GEMS. And GEMS utilizes ports, open ports, to an extent that I've never seen in my 25 years as an IT professional. I have over 100 IT certifications. I'm one of 25,000 people in the world to have such disciplines. So let's not take advantage of the people. Next, we all heard of TikTok, and there was congressional hearings on how it needs to be banned. So I just want to play a quick 25 seconds of a video regarding Mark Rubio, our senator, and Brian Mast, speaking on TikTok. Okay. So what he's saying is TikTok is bad. And what we found, I didn't finish my 27 slides, my time ran out. There is an element of TikTok. There's another company called Tencent, and they're owned by the CCP. And their software is embedded in the images of Mesa County, Colorado, and Coffee County, Georgia. They're in all of the counties, okay? So we have TikTok sitting in our servers. It's not the machines, it's not the DS200s. As a matter of fact, just the other day, the USB drives that we all talk about, I was able to plug a USB drive into a DS200 and open up SQL Server Management Studio from my phone, go into the unprotected password database that has the votes, and change a two to a one, and flip votes very easily. Anyone can do it from a cellphone. So next, you know, Article 1, Section 3 of the Virginia Constitution was one of the cleanest ones written. It says government ought to be instituted for common benefit, protection, and security of the people. I don't know how these machines secure our elections. They don't. They work for you. It's an industry. And finally, we have Michael Barnett, Marcy Woodward, Maria Marino, Greg Weiss, Maria Sax, who left the room, Mac Bernard, Sarah Baxter, and that's it. What I have here are, these are affidavits of maladministration that you have 72 hours to counter. And what I'm doing now is I'm building the case because we know we can only defund the machines. But this is espionage, okay? This is, if you go to tinyurl.com/electionespionage, this proves that this is deep-rooted espionage. It's not just election fraud. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
72 hours, folks.
Next, I have Mary Frey.
I'll speak.
Jane Justice, Karen Yeho, and I have a card. There's no name on it other than Watchdog, so if you want to give us your name, that would be fine.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Mary Frey, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am here today, I'm unprepared, but I worked this '22 election. Part of being an election worker, I took the class. And with that class, they explained the machines and just the whole process. When you are a worker, you have to vote early. My concern is, I did go to vote early at the Summit Library, and at that time, everything that was the protocol for Election Day, it was not happening during the early election period. There was not the ability for people to get a ballot. There were the machines, and when you look at the booklet, it explains those express machines for people with disabilities, hearing, visual, language. So my concern is, is it an insult to everyone that voted early at the Summit Library, assuming everyone has a disability over there, or is there something a little bit more nefarious going on over there? I did work on Election Day. We had 475 people that voted at our precinct. There were four of us, not one poll watcher. You know, it really was an exciting process, and I'm so proud and so thankful I was part of it. We had that express machine, and only one person out of 475 wanted to use that machine. And we explained it was if you have trouble seeing, trouble hearing, language, no one wanted to use that machine. And I just want to know, why is it being forced on people that go to vote early because of their jobs, their livelihood, whatever? Why are they being forced into a process that, number one, it's not indicated on our sample ballots that if we vote early, that we will not get a paper ballot? There were quite a few people that were there because I demanded a paper ballot. Once I asked for the paper ballot, other people then started asking. And this was just a couple of days before Election Day. So early voting, this is two months, and no one was getting a paper ballot. And you know, when you say that they have paper ballots, they didn't give me a paper ballot, I mean, they weren't going to give me a paper ballot until I demanded one. So that's why I'm here today. I just, I think that there's something that's not right. And if this is a process, please explain it to us. Don't just force it on us when we go to vote. Thank you very much, and happy Easter, everyone, and Passover.
Hello. This is Jane Justice. Thank you for taking my comments. Thank you, everybody, who's speaking up about the voter integrity. I will say that I served as a clerk also, very difficult. I will say that I served as a clerk also, very difficult job. Amazingly, I had a problem with somebody who wasn't checking the addresses, and it turned out to be a big problem, and I was never, I was kind of given the runaround and never invited back, even though they needed so many poll workers, okay? So, something's not right there either. There's an important election going on today in Wisconsin for Supreme Court, and George Soros has heavily backed the candidate, who if he wins, wants to abolish voter ID. What country am I living in? And what does this have to do with us here in Palm Beach County? I think each of you on the Commissioner's seat are aware that America is slowly being burned to the ground by a foreign entity. Yes, the presidential election was stolen in 2020, and you can track the destruction of the enemy everywhere. I'll come back to tell you about that later. But there's far too many people in this country that do not know that they're being lied to and being totally disenfranchised by a corrupt electronic voting system. But most of us now do, and very few of us that are here today represent a major majority here in Palm Beach County. Tallahassee should not be telling Palm Beach County citizens who their representatives should be, but this is what's happening as our votes are being manipulated in many ways from the top down. We do not want our votes sent up into an iCloud. Are you aware that's going on? And we don't want the returns coming back to the warehouse made up. Elections were stolen right here in Palm Beach County, and I believe there's a man here that has proof of it, I've seen it. We are here to reclaim our most valued right and restore a fair and just voting process. You control the purse, and therefore, the buck stops with you. I realize you have limits, okay? But most certainly, you can back us, and we can make a difference in our world right now. It's not going to happen unless it happens here. You know that most of the poor vote, folks that voted for you are out working now, but make no mistake, they are aware of what's going on. You have heard much testimony concerning these corrupt machines. You are beholden to us and not to SOE Wendy Link. We have a Voters' Bill of Rights, and we expect that you should act to restore our elections now. Where has the agenda ever been about the voting process? I remember a few years back, but it's time to revisit that. You can do that. If you can't do it, who can? I certainly can, okay? One-day voting, hand-counted paper ballots with, ballots with verified and eligible citizens only. Please do the right thing and take the stand for the people who are counting on you. Finally, this should be what the agenda is all about until we solve this problem. And $33 million a year for the, for votes that we don't know, listen, something's got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My, the last card is Karen Yeho.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Mayor, and Assistant County Administrator, County Lawyer. Now, I understand the jurisdiction, what kind of jurisdiction that you have. It's called money, money jurisdiction, for assign more, appropriate more money for the clerk of court to hire more inspectors. That's what I'm here for. And also, a test group to look into the property title fraud. That's what I'm here for, about the property type of fraud. I have so many property got stolen, and it's so ridiculous, and I had to fight all my title in the federal court, you know, to get back my properties. So, here is one example. I, last time I keep, here, I give one more example. One, it started off with my mom being, uh, being accused of incapacitated. Then, I figure out, well, there's a fake lawyer show up, there's a fake document show up, and there's no attorney or record show up, so can you possibly be fake doctor show up? So, I did a search. First set of doctors said my mother didn't have problem. Second of the doctors, they were doctor shopping, and the doctors, and the other three people, they were, cannot be accountable. They were fake people coming to my mother's house. I'm the least restrictive alternative guardianship. And I was, with a fake court order denied that. Then, right here, this is my property. Three people owns it. Three children of my parents owns the property. Then, there's a fake court order come out to erase this. Then you got, then you got this illegal property transfers right here. Did not show this one, but show only this. The same lawyers do the illegal sale and illegal title insurance, so to cover up all the crimes. Now, I understand Palm Beach County have property title fraud alert, but it did not help in this case. It did not help with the other cases, because the clerk of the court recording, they, they told me, "We only do recording." And the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser say, "We only do appraising." So, where are the homeowner's property right that's under Constitution, Fifth Amendment, life, liberty, and property? What the Constitution say that to? And where are my property right? Thank you. Thank you for your time. Listen to this.
Thank you.
I have two non-speaking cards. Beth Notheas Jr. was looking for a proclamation for Haitian Flag Day. And so, I will give this to the mayor. And then, Emily, I can't read your last name, it was in reference to voting and her ballot, and she was told that, huh, excuse me, "I was told I already voted, then I got a ballot that was not in my district. Poll worker told me that was the only ballot she had. How corrupt is Palm Beach County? Be honest, good people, God bless." Those are the two speaking cards. And again, I have one card that has, Watchdog has the name on it, so if you're still here and you want to identify yourself, come up and speak. Otherwise, we're done for the day.
All right. Anything for the good of the order? Let's see any? Okay. We are adjourned.